It's giving us some.
Now it is.
Yeah, you see it? Okay.
Got it.
Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome to the May meeting of the Town of Brighton Planning Board. I would like to introduce the members of the board. I am Bill Price. We have with us John Osowski, Karen Altman, Jason Babcock Steiner, Fader, Pam Delaney, board members. Ramsey Boehner is town planner and secretary to the board. And Ken Gordon is the town attorney and attorney for the planning board as well. So I'd like to begin with Ramsey, would you call the role, please?
Altman.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Fader.
Here.
Delaney.
Here.
Babcock Steiner.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Like to end with a motion to approve the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one meeting minutes. Do we have a motion from any of the board members?
Our motion that we approve the minutes.
Laney motions.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Sausky seconds.
Any discussion? Were there comments or edits anybody had? Okay, Ramsey, please call the role.
Altman. Price.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Laney.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Sausky.
Hi.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you. We will approve the April twenty-first meeting minutes at our June meeting. A series of public hearings tonight. I do want to point out that under new business application nine P N B one dash twenty, the application of Baptist Temple and Clover Park properties has postponed until our June sixteenth meeting. But we will hear the other public hearings now. Ramsey, could you please confirm that the public hearings we're going to have tonight were advertised?
Yes, they were properly advertised in the Brighton Pittsburgh Post on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
All right, thank you. Our first public hearing tonight is application four P zero one dash twenty-one. The application of the Country Club of Rochester as owner for site plan modification to construct three clay tennis courts and nineteen parking spaces at their property located twenty-nine thirty-five East Avenue. And as you can see, everybody, we we will be presenting the applications, drawings, and any other materials submitted. And once the board has asked questions, we'll allow people interested in the in the specific application to comment or ask questions. But for now, I'm going to look out there and see if there's anybody representing Country Club of Rochester.
Hi, this is Andrew Spencer with BME Associates. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Excellent. Again, my name is Andrew Spencer with BME Associates, representing our client, the Country Club of Rochester. I believe Rick Holfith was also going to join the meeting this evening. I do not know if he is online or not.
Yes, I'm here, Andrew.
All right. Hi, Rick. How are you this evening?
Good. I'm the golf course superintendent here at Country Club of Rochester.
Yeah, so I will give the board a brief overview of what the proposal is and then open it up for board questions. What the Country Club of Rochester is intending on doing is to expand their facilities for their club members. And one of the facilities they would like to expand and make better is the tennis court facility on the course. And what is being proposed are three clay tennis courts in the area that an existing asphalt ice rink is located on the site. Immediately adjacent to the west, the four blank rectangles is the existing paved tennis court facility. And immediately to the east, up in that upper right-hand corner of this plan is the paddle tennis courts that exist on the site today. So what the proposal is, is to remove the existing asphalt ice rink and put in three clennis clay tennis courts in its place. The clay tennis courts will be a baffle style play tennis court, meaning there will be a water supply to it to keep the moisture content of the clay consistent for play. Another improvement that is being proposed is fencing around the tennis courts. There's a sixteen-foot-high fence along the golf course, the whole location. A ten-foot-high fence on the northern portion adjacent to the access drive. And then the fence will drop down to approximately four feet in height along the western and eastern side. We are proposing nineteen additional parking spaces along the access drive. Six current parking spaces are located right at the tennis court building. And there are fifteen spaces that are located in front of the paddle tennis facility. These nineteen spaces are to open up to allow for people to drive directly to the tennis courts and provide better connectivity to the tennis courts and 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 the users. We have also proposed landscape improvements along the golf course side of the tennis courts, and that is to provide additional buffering as well as a different additional screening to augment the fence. There are golf balls that do go into this area from errant shots from the tee box on this hole. And the plant material in the fence is to provide protection to the users of the tennis court. We have also proposed extensive landscaping along the northern property boundary as well. And that is to provide screening to the neighboring properties. Please note that we did receive and obtain variances to allow for the tennis court in the front yard. We obtained a variance for the increased fence height up to the sixteen feet that has been requested. We also received a variance to allow for an accessory structure in the front yard. That accessory structures that on this particular plan is that little gray box area to the to the lower left. Thank you for highlighting that. And that that accessory structure is to house nets, house equipment to roll the clay tennis courts, brooms, and things of that nature. And that'll be utilized just for the tennis courts themselves. From a grading perspective and a drainage perspective, the existing drainage on the site will remain consistent with what exists today. Drainage comes across the site from a northwest to a southeast direction. Any drainage coming off of the clay tennis courts will be allowed to infiltrate into the existing rough area of that particular golf hole as well as the fairway and then dissipate directly into the soil strata. Please also note that there is a proposal to provide lighting on the westernmost courts. The court closest to the the existing tennis building. And we will illuminate that and illuminate it for evening play. We did receive letters from adjoining neighbors to the property that were in support of the project. Then the Country Club of Rochester has made a made it apparent and made a very good showing with the neighbors to discuss this proposal. Believe all the residents in this area are in support of what is being proposed with you this evening. I don't think I need to belabor this much more than what I've suggested. We did provide a letter of intent dated April twentieth, twenty twenty-one that has some additional information within it about the clay tennis courts themselves as well as all the information that I just provided to the board. Rick, I don't know if you had anything else that you might want to provide to the board at this point?
Sure. Just mainly that those parking places that are proposed are really where we just marked out and picked locations where cars kind of park anyway. We just don't have enough parking for the racket sports program. So we just kind of added places where where they park in the grass and currently. And then lastly, there's an extensive kind of shrub and tree planting program and in regards to this. And we did meet with all the neighbors and gained their approval and hopefully the board received their letters of support. And I guess that's the main thing. And clay, you know, clay tennis courts are generally a natural material. And they should be an improvement over the asphalt surfaces there now.
Yeah, I believe with that, Mr. Chairman, we would answer any questions the board may have at this time.
Thanks, Andy and Rick. If I could just ask everybody that's on the call tonight to mute yourself if you're not speaking. We'd appreciate it. Andy, I I think you explained everything. Do you anticipate there being bleachers or any other type of you know, seating or anything for people to to watch this or if you have events or tournaments of any kind?
No bleachers are being proposed at this point in time. The area directly to the west of the clay tennis court in between the existing tennis courts and the clay tennis courts is going to be a lawn area where they may be able to set up lawn chairs or something of that nature. But bleachers and things of that nature are not being proposed at this at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. And this hill are renting that's up shows a another darker area along the I'm going to just call it the north side. And and another on the souths on the south side near the proposed planting. Could you just clarify what those hatched areas mean?
Sure. Ramsey, could you please put up the grading and utility plan, please? And this I'll describe based upon this plan. So what we're doing to control some of the drainage coming off of the access drive prior to it entering and getting on to the tennis court from the north is we're actually proposing a if you will, a French drain system where we would have in an under drain in an area gravel area that I believe is approximately flip to my page to see the we'll have a four-inch PVC tile in an area that's roughly five to six feet in width. And that is to catch the drainage coming from the north to the northwest down to the southeast. And we have the same type of facility on the south side of the tennis courts as well. Any drainage that's coming off of the clay tennis courts, we're going to capture into the French drain and then we'll be discharging just a little bit further to the east into the natural grade, and then it will flow down to the southeast for the remainder of the of that golf hole.
Okay, thank you. And from an elevation standpoint, are these courts roughly at the same elevation that the existing asphalt is or are you raising this up a little bit?
We will be raising the tennis courts up approximately six inches on the north side and approximately a foot to the south side. Again, it's to try to get the tennis courts above existing grade ever so slightly. So we don't get drainage from other areas crossing across the tennis courts.
Yeah.
And the the existing ice rink is sunken by that amount for the opposite reason.
Yeah, we yeah. Okay. And do you have a do you have a graphic of the of the lighting that's proposed? Or you do the height of it?
Yeah, we had the lighting is being provided by the manufacturer, the installer of the tennis courts themselves. And that was provided under kind of separate cover, if you will, within the package.
Andy, on that was one of the questions I had. That package shows all the the all four courts being lit with double-headed lights.
Yes, this was this particular plan was not revised based upon the input that we had from the neighbors. An original proposal was to provide lighting on all three of the courts. After discussion with the neighbors, the Country Club of Rochester came to agreement with them to just illuminate that western court. Okay. And then the fixture style is the single-style fixture that is being proposed by Oval Tennis. That is that is correct, that fixture.
Andy, do you know if they're like dark sky compliant or what the 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 heat of the color, the temperature of the color is?
They will be dark sky compliant fixtures, and I believe I believe they did call that out. If it's not called out on here, Ramsey, I can definitely.
I was looking for it. I was having trouble finding it. I was I I know that it is to play tennis, so that's a different type of light, I imagine.
It definitely is a brighter light than a parking lot light and the the plan that was provided does show the illumination values on that western court. We're looking at values of thirty-foot candle to fifty-foot candle, so it is relatively bright in that area. If if you need more technical data, we can provide that information.
The the tennis courts, the existing tennis courts are lit, is that right?
The existing ice rink is lit.
It's that's what's lit, okay.
So there's eight light fixtures on the existing ice rink that will come out of service and be replaced with six light fixtures on one court.
And how tall are those existing light fixtures?
They're approximately twenty-eight to thirty feet tall.
And these are what, twenty?
Twenty-two, I believe.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-four pole with a small arch. Yeah.
Okay, for a base.
And we specifically meet with the neighbors in regards to the lighting.
And please note also, the existing paddle tennis courts are lit as well. All of those courts are lit.
Are there other questions from board members?
Bill, this is Ken Gordon. I have a question if I may.
Please go ahead.
Andrew or or Rick, but I think this is an Andrew question. Do you have plans for how you're going to protect the clay tennis court surface over the winter? Are you tarping it? Are you anticipating putting a bubble over it? What what's the plan there?
Actually, I can I do not know the direct answer to that question. I would need to talk with Oval Tennis Incorporated, who are actually installing the tennis courts. But the if anything that excuse me, Rick?
I can cover that one if you want.
Oh, please do.
Yes, from a tennis maintenance, the only thing that happens to those courts is the the lines where the where the define the inner, you know, that you see there on the chart. They actually have two-by-fours and some cinder blocks put on them so they don't kind of buckle out of the clay as the clay freezes. That's the main thing that will happen. There's no tarping, obviously no bubble. The that's really it.
Okay, I just wanted to know if there was any supplemental structure that would be anticipated over the winter.
No, I think they would love it, but no, that's not the proposal.
Andy, the roadway is one way, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and as part of, you know, it is one of the things the neighbors did ask for is that we display that. There's only two one-way signs. We will be adding several more there on, you know, to to kind of really make the point that that's an exit, an entrance only, not an exit, and only access to the racket sports.
Other board members, any questions?
I have one thing, Andy. What is the amount of disturbance? We believe you might need to do a SWIP based on calculations of the town engineer. And that's something you're going to need to look at per our town code.
I believe per potentially through the town code, we may be able, we may need to provide a SWIP, but it is less than an acre worth of disturbance, which does not require New York State D E C permit or Speedy's permit for this. I realize the town code is different. We have shown erosion control on the grading and utility plan. We've put up erosion control measures around the area that would be disturbed. We've shown tree protection around those trees to be preserved per the town code as well. And we can have a further conversation with the town engineer about any further mitigation measure we would have to have for erosion control on the site.
And I just want to make I want to make sure you're aware of it, Andy. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Other questions from the board? All right, not hearing it.
Yeah.
Ron, did you have some?
No, I I have no questions at this time. Thank you. Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ken or Ramsey, you guys are all set?
Yes, I am, Bill.
All right. But this is a public hearing, and if there's anyone in the tonight that wishes to address this application, please raise your hand. That is a there's a function on the on the computer that allows you to do that through whatever format you're watching us, hopefully. If if that's not working, please wave your hands frantically and Jeff Fresh will try to find you and let you speak.
I'm not seeing anyone. Jeff, do you see anyone? I don't see anyone, Bill.
All right. All right, Andy and Rick, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we're going to move on to our second application, which is five P O one one, application of Benderson Development. Owner and Jennifer Blaine, Firehouse Subs, Lessee, for a conditional use permit for outdoor drive-through and outdoor dining at twenty-eight thirty West Henrietta Road. I thought I saw.
I thought I saw Jenny's name.
That's me. Yeah, I'm right here.
There you are.
Yep.
I saw your name earlier.
Yeah, my name is Jennifer, but I go by Jenny, so.
Well, well, Jenny, good evening.
Good evening. So obviously, I've never done a planning board meeting before, so I don't know the lingo. I don't know any of it, but I do the best I can here. I am the owner of It's Not a Wrap LLC, and I'm opening this franchise of Firehouse Subs in a former Tim Hortons, and I need a conditional use permit. It's a restaurant. It's a fast casual sub shop. The I do have the questions in front of me that I'm trying to go through here and the employees, the maximum amount of employees that would be on site at peak time would be between eleven AM and two PM. The and that would be about ten employees total. My business hours would be seven days a week, ten thirty AM to nine PM. The maximum amount of customers, including indoor seating, outdoor seating, and the drive-thru would probably be around sixty to sixty-five at max peak time. Let's see here, there's twenty-six parking spots, two of which are handicap accessible and not sharing with any neighbors whatsoever. And the merchandise and deliveries will be delivered early morning hours prior to opening five, six AM, so it wouldn't affect any customers, and it would be delivered through the back entrance directly into the freezers. Um, see what else here? There should be the only trash that would be coming out of that would be food waste, cardboard, any paper products, plastic cups, any sort of normal everyday garbage. And the only chemicals that would be put in this or just be cleaning products from Procter and Gamble. And currently, there are no special events planned on aside from just getting it open, which would be wonderful. I did see the the referral from Monroe County, and I did call, contact all of the people that they recommended I contact. And there wasn't any sort of issues with most of them. I did file a form with the Department of Health. The Department of Transportation had no issue. They said that it wasn't in their jurisdiction. And the I did submit the PW two to the Monroe County Department of Environmental Services, so he does have that on file. But he did also say that it was already approved for Tim Hortons, so he didn't anticipate any problems since we're not making any changes. So the only changes we're making are just to the interior and then the signage, which my lawyer and the sign company will be in your June meeting for. So for the drive-through as well, we're just replacing the the former Tim Hortons menu boards that are shown right there on the former Tim Hortons plans. And that's that's all I have. I hope I'm not missing anything, or if you have any questions that I can try and answer.
Thank you, Jenny. Jenny, do you by chance do you is will this be your your first franchise?
Yes.
Is it?
Yeah.
And how much of the the product is is made on site? Do you make everything?
Everything. Well, yeah, everything except for like the soups and the bread. So the bread and and the soups and everything come in. But yeah, everything else is fresh. Yep.
Okay. And did you say, did you say the number of employees you said was during the time, which was ten thirty to two?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, it'd be about.
I just didn't know how many.
Yeah, that would be ten total because there's two separate lines of creation of sandwiches. So one would be for the drive-through and one would be for the rest of the restaurant. So that's also based on the training that I've done in Palatka, Florida, in their same setup as this, and they had the ten during the peak hours.
And my last question is, what what would you say is the average turnaround of a customer? Are they? Are they there? No, I'm guessing the the ones that drive up, it's it's fairly quick. You know, you're you're out in five to eight minutes or something, but that come in, what is the what is the turnover like?
It's the same. It's about five minutes. Yeah, it's a it's a fresh sandwich. You're making a sub, so it's about five minutes total.
All right, Ramsey, do you have questions?
Oh, I just wanted to confirm. How many seats are you proposing inside and outside?
Twenty-four seats inside, twelve outside. But we live in Rochester, so we know that nobody's using those outdoors probably three hundred days a year.
Yeah. I don't have any other questions, Bill.
Other board members have questions.
I'm all set.
No, I'm Karen, you're all set? Jason, you're good?
All set.
John?
Yeah, this is John. I'm good. Thank you.
Fader? You're all set? Okay. Ken Gordon? I'm reading lips, so. All right, Jenny, thank you. Everybody, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that cares to address this application?
Please raise your hand.
Right, raise your hand.
Raise it or wave it.
I haven't seen anybody.
I'm not seeing anyone either.
Thank you.
Jenny, good luck with everything.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jenny.
Jenny, just so you know, before you run, I mean, if you want to stay on and listen to the board discuss this, you're welcome to do that.
Yeah, I'm definitely going to stay on. Thank you.
Not required, but you're welcome.
And that is that's true for all of our applicants. We can we will be deliberating and making decisions on these on these public hearings and these applications upon a conclusion of hearing them.
Great.
All right, that does bring us to application or third one for tonight, which is application five P O two dash twenty-one, application of McQuaid Jesuit High School for modification. for modification of a conditional use permit approval, which was numbered two, two numbers, seven P O three ninety-three and seven P O one dash ten to replace existing sports field lighting with Musco, Musco LED lighting on four eighty-foot poles at their athletic facility on eighteen hundred South Clinton Avenue. Is there anyone here to speak to this application?
There is. Let me find them. Drew, Drew Dedit?
We have a Nathan.
Hello?
He also raised his hand.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Said Nathan, Bill.
We got it. Is there, there's a Drew, are you asking if, is that you, if you're asking?
Yes, this is Drew from McQuaid. I'm the director of facilities and operations. I'm just making sure you can hear me.
Yes, please.
And Drew, do you have anyone joining you tonight?
Yeah, Nathan from Musco is also on. Hello.
Hello, Nathan.
I need to. Uh, please go ahead, either, either Drew or.
Okay, so I'll go real quick. I'll let Nathan give the presentation, but the reason we're doing this is because our current six existing light poles are thirty years old. They're made out of wood. They're highly inefficient. And they're becoming a liability. We don't want them coming down on a team and or anybody that's on site. We are also cognizant of the fact that they do have quite a bit of wash over to the apartment complex. So these new light towers will be four versus six. And we will not have anywhere near the washout over Elmwood into the apartment complex with these new highly efficient LED Musco light towers.
Nathan, if you could just highlight for us where the four are going to, I mean, we can kind of see on the plan here, but remind us where the six are and how close the, the poles are to, to where the existing ones are.
Yeah, you bet. And on this presentation that we submitted, are you on page four, or is that the first one you show right in front of us right now? That's okay. That one works fine. Just to. Nope. Yep, that's fine. Go back the other direction. Okay, just perfect, just so I can get an idea of where we have to go forward or back. So starting here, if you zoom in a little bit, they are exactly the same distance away from Elmwood as the existing poles are. So, and in fact, on that side, the biggest change will be eliminating the middle pole that is there now around the fifty-yard line that will go away. The two new structures are again within ten feet down line, left and right on that image there or that aerial image of the existing. Exactly the same distance away from the field and exactly the same distance away from Elmwood. And then on the visitor's side or the side furthest from Elmwood, they're also quite similar. The one that's on the bottom right is just a few feet further away from Elmwood Ave, if you will, to get it in line with the back of the bleachers or the, I should say, the first row of the bleachers. And then same thing on the left side. We're backing it up. Right now it's right off of the track in front and of creating a line of sight issue for people on that side. We're backing it up to get more in line with the bleachers. That helps for lots of reasons. Again, further away from Elmwood, closer to the school property. And then the middle pole behind the press box is getting removed and will not be replaced.
You, these, these will be eighty versus the, what is the height of the existing?
Seventy feet currently.
Oh, ten feet more.
Yeah, there's a few of them that are.
Is the, is the array of lights or I'm not sure that's the right term, but the, the the number of fixtures per pole, it's, you have to have more than the, than, than is it the total of six? Or are you, are they, are there less luminaires that are just more efficient?
Yeah, that's exactly correct. And if you backed up a cup, a slide, it's probably the best way to explain this right there. And if you can zoom in on that just a little bit to make it easier for people to see it, there you go. So what's there now is all the way on the left in terms of technology. So very little ability to control light. And when you do that, you get a very small percentage of the light that's produced by the light source that's actually getting on the field, right? And that as you move forward in time, going to the right, our current LED product is actually on that full second from the right, right there. So same vantage point, same amount of light. And what you can see there is instead of six fixtures like there is on the left, that current pole only has a couple, two, actually three in this case. So the short answer to the question is right now each of these three, six poles has has six, or excuse me, let me double check the quantity. Eight. Those eight of them, excuse me, eight on each pole, which yields, it's actually four over four. So eight times six poles, forty-eight fixtures, and they're fifteen hundred watt metal halight, so they consume in total around seventy AKW. And what we will be putting back up in its place will be fewer fixtures on the top. We'll drop that fixture quantity by one. Will actually increase its light levels and more specifically get a balanced light, amount of light over the field and over the track, which is currently unbalanced. And the overall energy consumption actually will go down to forty-eight AKW. So the biggest reason all of that is possible is that we're just getting a, instead of twenty percent of light on the field that we get on the far left, twenty-five, thirty years ago, we're getting almost ninety-three percent of the light that's produced by the lamp onto the field, and the remaining amount is actually lost inside the reflector system and, and optics and other things. Virtually no sky glow, virtue spill and glare will be reduced substantially from what it is today.
Hey, Drew, could you just give us a sense of the number of events through the school year? And I know last year's not a good way to benchmark, but you have a sense of the number of evening or events that require the lighting?
Yes, absolutely. As you know, we're an all-boys school, so we only have one set of sports. We don't have girl's sports. So we have three sports that do utilize the field at night. And I would think there would be no more than, I mean, this is throughout the, the season, about twenty to twenty-two games in the entire school year that would be outside under lights.
And those are through the fall and the spring?
Correct. Yes, we have the lacrosse out on the field in the spring and football and soccer would be the fall sports. Being that it's darker in the fall, the lights would have to come on a little sooner than the spring. But football in total, I think they play four home games and soccer might do eight to ten. So the usage of the field would not go up any more than it has been since inception. It's just that, as Nathan stated, the lighting will be concentrated more on the field rather than washing out all over everywhere else except the field.
Yeah, you can pretty much see it down to South Clinton.
Yeah, yeah, you won't be able to see it anymore, so that, that's no worries there.
What are the hours that you'll be operating? Those lights?
Most night games in the fall, excuse me, start, or most all games usually start between six thirty and seven. Lights will come on probably at six and run till no later than nine thirty, ten o'clock at the most.
Bill, Ken Gordon, if I could just do a follow-up on that. So Drew, you're, you're talking about games. Do any of your teams practice at night and will they be using the lights at night for practice?
Yeah, sometimes they do. When they, when they are later in the season, they definitely will, but that does not run too much longer than, they try to get the kids to practice, practice and get them home before, you know, a certain hour. They don't want to keep them there too long, so the night practices are not that substantial. I couldn't tell you exactly how many they do have, but it's not anywhere near more than five to ten practices that would run later than what they would need the lights on for.
But the, the twenty to twenty-two games does not include the practices?
It does not, correct. And most practices during season are right after school. So they go out two thirty, three o'clock, they practice, they're done by six thirty, seven o'clock.
Okay, other board members have questions?
Yeah, this is John. Tell me, is, is the lighting level adequate to televise any games if, if that's so desired?
I will let Nathan answer that, but I would say yes, because we have televised games with our current lights, and these lights are tenfold of what we have now.
Yeah, the short answer is yes. Couple of years ago, I would have said no, even if we were lighting the field to the same light levels that we are today. Just that one of the benefits of LED when it's controlled correctly is that it appears significantly brighter than what it actually is. I'm sure everybody on this call has seen bad LED applications. You know, fixtures that don't have light control and how intense that can be. It's, works well for TV and for cameras though, because it, it also looks brighter than what it really is. And in this case, the actual average light levels that we're lighting the field and track to are going to be very similar, if not the same. What's significantly different is that the uniformities are much improved. So you take the high spot and the low spot and figure out that ratio. Right now it's probably in the five to six to one range. We're going to be closer to one point five to one. So that also helps make it feel brighter and look brighter on TV. The biggest reason it also looks really bright is because of the contrast, right? So right outside of the facility, it will be very, very dark very quickly. So when you have that bright light in against a black backdrop, it makes a very impressive scene. And if you actually just want to scroll through those local photos, I did pick a few that are from projects in the metro area that are using our LED. And I believe everybody has the hard copies. That first one that you, just a moment ago, that is Grease Arcadia. It's about the same distance in that photo from what it is at Elmwood Ave, just a touch closer. But it gives an idea of how good it looks compared to what it does today. The next one's Grease Athena. You're actually seeing a little bit more light in front of me from my iPhone because the parking lot has lights in there. Otherwise it'd look a little better, but again, just another vantage point from, not from Elmwood Avenue, but from Route one hundred. Next photo is Grease Odyssey from the press box or from the top row of the bleachers, I should say. Next photo is Rockport Tennis. Again, it's interesting here just because you're seeing that significantly more glare from that little sixty-watt parking lot LED than you are from the twelve hundred watt LED fixtures. Next one, Gates Chill Life. It's a new stadium. Second photo there, next one is same field, just a different vantage point. Next one is RIT's field. Again, similar vantage point. That's if you were much closer than if you're walking from on the sidewalk, but gives you a nice view. Next one is Word of Life Bible Institute. Reason I put that in there is just because they, that was set in Adirondack Park. So we went through the APA process to gain approval to light that field. They had a forty-foot restriction on mounting heights, and when they saw what we could do with light control, they allowed us to mount eighty-foot poles inside the park boundaries, and that field is lit to NCAA levels, so brighter than what McQuaid Jesuit is doing. Next one, same photo, just different vantage, we're same facility, different view. And then lastly, one of our favorites. Just threw this in here because monuments in the national parks are something that we also like for the same reasons that Drew picked us to light his field. They were really good at lighting what people want to light, but not lighting other stuff. So this is one of many that we do. And although we're a massive company, we're a privately owned, family-owned business out of Iowa, which is where I was born and raised. So it's you know, getting to work with a company that's from the United States and involved with light control, something that we really appreciate, and Drew and I have spent a lot of time talking about. But that's a good snapshot. Any questions?
Thank you.
Shields and are they aimable? Can you adjust them?
They are. Go, if you want to go to page two, I believe it was. And then zoom in on that. So these are full cutoff fixtures, so there's no light above the visor to the side of the visor. They're long enough that it minimizes reflection light. And that entire system is sealed in a clean room environment when we build them. And it's aimed to a thousandth of a degree inside of our factory, so we do not change visor configuration once it's built. But we have a hundred different visor combinations and diode combinations that create a thousand different options. So when we do a lighting design for this field, which we've completed, of course, it actually, there'll be a multiple different types of fixtures, visors, diode counts, the optics and everything to maximize the performance of the fixture aimed in that particular spot. So when we do need to do a fine tune, we actually will physically aim the entire fixture down, close at a degree or two. Because of what we do in the factory, it's very rare that that's needed, but in the event it is, and we, we rent a lift, come around there and actually make a manual adjustment, lock it back into place, and it's perfect.
Tell me, is there an emergency lighting system so that the power is lost? There's some kind of a small backup lighting system, maybe not necessarily provided by Musco, but provided by another system at the athletic field?
No, we don't have any emergency backup power. I mean, if we lose power to the building, then I think the entire town of Brighton would be dark. I've been in McQuaid for twenty-four years. Knock on wood, I, we have not lost power in our building for any sustained amount of time. But if we lose power to the poles themselves, we do have LED wall packs on our field house that are quite bright and would be able to illuminate if people needed to exit from the stadium that lost power. We would have plenty of power on the outbuilding to show them their way.
And to expand on that, Drew, the state of New York actually requires an ingress system that is fed from an emergency supply for any facility that has five thousand or more spectators. So again, this is athletic facilities specifically. Yeah. Most people typically use inverters or other types of systems. And the requirement is like you would expect, you know, one flick candle with nothing less than point one. New York City is a little higher. But in this case, seating capacity is well under the five thousand.
Yeah, we, this is Friday night lights. We don't get five thousand people at our games.
Right, and, and on top of that, they're actually improving their scenario anyway, because now if a flicker is much more likely than a failure in today's grid scenarios. And so with HID, that can trigger an outage, which will then require a cooldown period and a warm-up period to get back to full power. It honestly takes about ten minutes before they will re-strike, and then about another ten minutes before you get back to full power. In the event that there's a flicker here, there's actually a couple of seconds of power in the drivers for these, so most flickers will never be detected. And the event that there is a flicker that lasts five seconds, the system will automatically know that it's supposed And the event that there is a flicker that lasts five seconds, the system will automatically know that it's supposed to be on. And when power is restored, it will turn itself back on immediately and it's back to full power. So it actually reduces the risk in these kinds of scenarios by making this kind of an upgrade.
All right, um, other board members have questions? Jason, Pam, see no Karen, no David? Okay.
No.
Thank you. All right, Ramsey, you set?
Most set, thank you for asking, Bill.
Okay. All right, uh, thank you Drew, thank you Nate, um, sorry if it's Nathan.
No preference.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that cares to address this application? And please, uh. Use a raise hand function, wave your arms, uh.
I don't see anybody.
Not seen anyone either.
All right, uh, thank you guys, we're gonna move on then to.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. So can I stick around and then we'll have, uh.
Please do, yeah.
We'll have it, we'll have an understanding of, uh, we're going to be good to go on this by the end of the night.
That is correct.
Perfect, thank you for your time, everyone.
Yep, Drew, I am gonna jump on another call, send me a text if you need me to hop back on and I will jump back on.
All right, buddy.
Everybody have a great night. Yep, thank you.
All right, our next application is, uh, five P zero three dash twenty-one. Uh, application of Saint Thomas More of Rochester. And the Mary Carriola Center, let's see for a conditional use permit approval to allow for a school. Uh, accredited by New York State Department of Education, serving. With intellectual disabilities located at twenty-six seventeen East Avenue. I saw Melinda Gas Camp, uh.
Yep.
Linda, are you there?
Good evening.
Welcome.
And there's Karen.
Karen Zandi.
Yeah.
Also joining us, who's the president and CEO of Mary Carriola.
And Melinda, we do have Father Hart with us as well.
Oh, and Father Hart from, um, Saint Thomas More Church.
I think he's, um, O L Q P.
Yeah, yes. Our lady queen of youth. He's got both, both parents.
So, and, um, I'm here representing Mary Carriola as Vice Chairman of their Buildings and Facilities Committee. And so I'll be brief as well. Uh, pretty simple project. We are asking for a conditional use permit to occupy the portion of the existing building that's currently being used as a school. Uh, we would be a, uh, secondary school. Mary Carriola is a not-for-profit, um, stated, approved or accredited. Entity and they're also a member of the Coalition of Eight Fifty-three Schools. That, um, oversees and provides support for schools for children with, uh. Um, educational challenges. So just a little bit more about Mary Carriola too, and Karen can certainly jump in on this is that. We do provide, uh, educational facilities for children who have, who have, um. Intellectual and physical disabilities. And so it's, uh, they provide occupational, therapeutic. Anything a, a child needs to learn and be integrated into the school system. So, um, to be specific about our project. We're currently Mercy, uh, is it, uh, is occupying the school. So they're be moving out and we, our intention is to have occupy the school in two phases. Phase one, we would have fourteen classrooms total, but phase one would be five classrooms and then nine classrooms. Would happen in phase two, which would be next school year, twenty twenty-two. So because the school, the building is already being run as a school, there's very little work that needs to be done. It's primarily interior renovations to, uh, address code issues. And also because of our student population, there are specific requirements with the building that we would need to. Uh, adequately serve our students. The exterior renovations include just, uh, window glazing. And then there's two sidewalk handicap curb ramps that we're proposing. And a playground in the northern northwest corner of the property. And even the playground is part of the programming for the school. Because we're providing fitness equipment that helps with, um, you know, muscular development. And hand-eye coordination, things like that. So it's not just a playground, it's actually fitness equipment. And then one other exterior improvement is the removal of a. Very, uh, deteriorated tree that needs to come down, unfortunately. We're not prov- proposing any new additional parking. Uh, in nineteen ninety-three, there was, uh, approval for the school that's there today. There, um, required, it was two hundred and thirty-four parking spaces. Of which they're allowing a hundred and sixty-four to be paved. Our parking will be shared with the church and the occupancy be quite similar as it is today. So we don't see the need for any additional parking, paved parking. Um, yeah, it's gonna operate fine, the church in the schools have the differing hours and different days of the week. So that will continue to operate well. Uh, no additional site lighting proposed either. And regarding traffic, we're actually going to be reducing traffic because. Our student population doesn't drive to school, they all take the bus almost exclusively. So we don't have a lot of, uh, parent drop off and pickup like happening today. So the, uh, number of vehicular trips will be reduced significantly from what it is today. So, um, make sure it touch base. We did conduct two Zoom meetings for the neighbors. And also a couple of face-to-face meetings and, uh, had positive feedback. I believe you have two letters of support for the project. And, um, that's pretty much, it's a very simple, simple project. Karen, is anything you want to add to that?
I'll address any questions, I think you did a great job, Melinda, um, certainly there's.
I'm a little out of practice, I'm a retired landscape architect.
Not on this project, you're not, um, I'm very grateful for, um, the work that Melinda's done and the help, um, Ramsey with your team. And Father Hart has been great to work with, we look forward to a long relationship there. Our, our kids, um, will do fine in this facility, we just need a few upgrades, mostly around safety. And if anybody has any questions about the agency, I'm, I'm happy to talk for a long time, but I, I know your meetings are quite long. So I'll just invite you in when we get settled.
Thank you both. Uh, just, uh, if you could, Melinda, um, or Karen, just give us a, a brief overview. We, we know that, uh, Mercy has been there and, uh, just please compare like your hours. You know, when the students arrive, when, when does the, is the classroom day end? Um, what might be some of the events that, uh, go on in the evenings? Um, and if those are, if those are being developed and you don't, don't have specifics. Um, we just want to get a sense of the, the time of day and, and, uh, usage of the facility. Uh, for evenings and special events.
Hmm, well, I would just say it's, um, quite compatible with the church, as Melinda said. Our, our school day is typically, kids get off the bus about eight thirty, um, about three thirty, they're back on the buses. So we do serve a lot of districts, um, the geographic scope of our, of our school is ten counties. So there is, um, you know, al- almost all of our kids are bussed. But it depends on, um, you know, the regular day is pretty much standard for school day. All of the children are accompanied into the building. So there's, um, most of our kids do not, um, do not take public transportation. Very few are, um, on what we call independent walkers. That would have a pass on their own, um, to, you know, have an activity or do something like that. So that's pretty typical, our staff, um, we've got some early birds that will, you know, come between seven and seven thirty in the morning. And pretty much we close up around five. Evening activities, we typically have two every year, uh, graduation and prom. And they're a blast, um, they're really wonderful activities. Um, we are actually thinking about, uh, because this will be new to us to have a small donor event in July. But that's typically quite small, that'll be our most intimate, uh, our closest friends.
We don't hold athletic events outside, so there, there won't be any athletic events or a need for lighting of fields or anything like that.
Mr. Melinda, this, um, uh, program is accredited by the New York State Department of Education, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, we're licensed as what's called an eight fifty-three school, all of our children, um, that come to Carriola have to qualify by having an intellectual disability. But, um, sort of our claim to fame is children that are, have multiple and complex disabilities. So it's just, it's typically not just an intellectual disability, because many of those kids can be mainstreamed in public schools. So we take kids that public schools refer to us, that are beyond the capabilities of the typical public school. And the typical special ed programs in public school.
Other board members have questions?
Yeah, this is John, tell me, how many, how many years, uh, of, what's the length of the agreement? Between, uh, Mary Ca- Carriola Center and the, uh, and the parish?
Sure, our, our current lease agreement is four years and that was, um, frankly, and Father Hart, you might be able to speak to this better than I. If you exceed four years in the church, it needs, um, quite a bit of approval, um, to go beyond that. So we were eager to move forward with the four-year agreement that we know we will be extending. I think it's, if it's, if it's five or beyond, the, the diocese requires special blessings.
The state of New York requires.
John, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Yeah, we certainly hope, uh, and, and intend our lease to be much longer than that because we are investing quite a bit in, um, improvements. You know, it's a great building, it needs some upgrades and, um, you know, there's quite a bit of expense with bathrooms that need to be made handicapped accessible. Aside from, as Melinda said, the windows, we want to make sure that the environment is safe for our kids. There's currently nineteen classrooms and we will be occupying, um, fourteen of them that are, will, will be, remain as classrooms. And the other rooms will be adapted to accommodate therapies, as Melinda said, we need a PT suite, physical therapy, occupational therapy. We'll have, um, vision therapy and lots of clinical services for the kids. So we'll basically flip some of the other classrooms into, um, you know, modified space to support their needs.
Uh, other board members, Karen? Jason? All set, David?
Yep, I'm set.
And Pam? Do you have any questions? You're, Pam, I see you trying to talk, but you're muted. Okay. All right, then, uh. Thank you, Melinda and Karen, Father. Uh, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that cares to address this application?
I'm not, if you could raise your hand or wave your hand.
Not seeing anybody.
I'm not seeing anyone either, Jeffrey.
All right, well, Melinda, good to see you and I'm jealous of your retirement. I'm glad you're staying busy and thank you and Karen for the service you provide.
Yeah, you guys do a nice job and you did a nice job with the application, which we greatly appreciate.
Thank you. I have Melinda to thank for that. So be careful if you, if you, uh, retire, I might scoop you up to volunteer.
All right, gang.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to, uh, move on to applications under new business. Reminder that, uh. Application of Baptist Temple and the Clover Park Properties LLC has been adjourned to our June meeting. So that brings us to application five P N B one dash twenty-one. Claire Streb is the owner and McMahon Leroux Associates as agent for preliminary site plan approval. For a single family house with a four hundred and nineteen square foot attached garage. Property located at fourteen oh two Blossom Road. Good evening, Al.
Good evening, Al Leroux, McMahon Leroux Associates. Uh, the lot itself is, uh, it's quite narrow, it's a, it's an infill lot, fifty feet wide. It's, um, perpendicular, it's only forty-six point two five feet. Uh, we're proposing a house that's, uh, that has, uh, a width of thirty-one, giving us a little bit of room. We haven't required any variances, so we're sticking with the seven and a half on either side and the forty foot front setback. Uh, the driveway, uh, we're looking for a two-car garage, it's, uh. Uh, we're looking also for a walkout in the back because the grade from the front of the home to the back of it drops about. Between eight and nine feet, so it actually is perfect for a walkout. The structure is a one-story above grade, um, eleven fifty-three. So we have, uh, we've been talking with, uh, Ri- with, uh, Rick, the Stefano about. Well, we've got the walkout area and how do we, how do we handle the walkout area? Um, but we don't plan to disturb any more than, well, less than half of the, of the, the site. Because the area disturbance is only, uh, what is it, twelve hundred square feet, twelve thousand square feet. Um, so it's pretty small. Um, and, uh, it's, it's a pretty simple application. Not a whole lot of room for utilities, not a whole lot of room for plantings. We have a, an encroachment of a blacktop driveway to the west that comes onto our property, further inhibiting us from. Doing something, we are looking, we have a swell that runs. Um, in the middle of the driveway, there's a high point just, uh, south of the, of the entrance to the garage. And it, it breaks both ways, both sides. And then the swell goes one and a half to, to, uh, steeper around each side and down the back and just goes on its way. Um, so that's, uh, that's it in a nutshell. Um, we know we have to apply to the state DOT for, uh, uh, a driveway permit. And, uh, given your blessing, we will, uh, we will do that right after this meeting. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Al. Um, Al, why do you need a, a, a curb cut permit from DOT because of the distance from the on-ramp?
Actually, the, the Blossom Road is, uh, two eighty-six.
This is a state road, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, have you guys looked at sharing the driveway?
I don't believe so.
Because the driveway is partially, the neighbor's driveway is partially on your client's property and the curb cuts are right next to each other.
Yeah, I know. Um, I'm really not a fan of sharing driveways personally. Um. So I wouldn't advise my client to do it for that reason. Um, I guess we don't mind them having theirs on our, on our property, I haven't heard. Uh, otherwise, but when you get to plowing and maintenance and everything else, there's always some issue. And, uh, I think I would, our client would be better served just having their own driveway and, and, uh. And go on their way.
Now, one of the concerns we're having, and we're trying to get our arms around this, because we're trying to familiarize ourselves with this project. I can't tell. I can't tell if you meet code yet. We're gonna need a lot more information about the elevations and the grading and how they relate. To determine if that walkout is going to be considered livable floor area. And if it is, you're gonna need a square footage variance. For livable floor area, from what I can tell on the plans. The other thing is, I don't know how you measured your height. You have to be careful with your walkouts, that you meet the the height requirement of the district. So we're probably gonna need to look at your elevations and your grading plans and try to understand how this is all working.
This is a topographic survey, topographic, and uh all the elevations are there, both existing and proposed, obviously, but um. So the information is all there and uh. I have put down a height of twenty-one point eight three. Which is from the back of the of the structure, because this is a one-story structure from the from the road.
I just need to see the elevations and the grading. You just need more information, Al, to to make sure that this thing is code compliant. And to how your grading along the side of that building could change it if it's a basement or a cellar, livable floor area or not. And that could also change the grading along the side of the house because you just don't have a lot of room there.
No, uh you're looking for uh more developed drawings?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. I can pass that on. I'm sure they haven't haven't expended the money at this point because they weren't sure where where we stood with it, so. But I don't don't imagine they'll mind. We'll have to have plans anyway.
Ramsey, what's the your con- your concern is that? If it is a walkout that deems the lower, the base level as?
Livable floor area, and then they would be over their allowed square footage. And sometimes how you handle that is how you backgrade along that foundation wall, how you grade the site. And I've seen, usually you have a lot more area to work with. To do proper grading along the walkout basement wall.
It's right at gray now.
If you have, if you have um more than fifty percent of the basement wall exposed, you're a livable floor area. That starts getting into livable floor area. Say if you have your normal basement, we don't usually calculate a normal basement that's totally covered by earth or all around it. As the floor area, but our code does say if you do a walkout and you have less than. Uh fifty percent of your wall area exposed, then you're not livable floor area. So that's what we need to see.
Yeah.
And I can't tell that. I can't tell that from these drawings, and also we need to do a height verification on the elevations.
No, it it does show that the the complete back wall is exposed. And a and a complete.
It's the side walls I'm concerned about, Al.
Okay.
Look, to me, it looks like you have more than fifty percent, but I don't know. I'm not the engineer designing this or the architect. We couldn't tell. We tried and it looked like maybe it wasn't, so that's where we are. It's beyond us. We weren't able to do a workshop now that the workshops help a lot with this. It's a tricky little site.
All right. Other questions from the board?
Yeah, this is John. I have a question. Mr. Leroux, on on your letter of April twentieth to the town. You say that the the parcel is point two four three acres, so just under ten thousand six hundred square feet. But you say you're only going to disturb twelve thousand square feet of land. So there seems to be some kind of a disconnect there.
Yeah, there's a, there's a math mistake there. There might be twelve hundred square feet.
Okay.
It's about a little less than half of the of the site. So we'll revise that, not a problem.
All right, great, thank you.
Al, have you talked to New York State?
No.
About the access and what they're gonna require?
Well, we know what they require for a single-family residence, so that's that's a standard. So for for just a driveway, for a residential driveway. So we do know that and we've provided the all of the the distance and whatnot uh that they require. Um and we'll have a separate map that'll show that. And along with the, what is it, sixteen-page application? Something to that effect. Uh so we we know what we need to do and 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 we know the what the specs are for the uh residential, just a residential curb cut.
Well, um do you know if the project impacts any wetlands? And what about the archaeological resources I saw on your mapper? That it flagged architectural res- archaeological resources?
It did, um but uh we've had other. Where they've indicated those things and we couldn't find anything. There was nothing that came up. That that showed us that we're impacting any of that. So we're not impacting any of the wetlands.
Okay, what did you look, what did what research should you do on the archaeological?
We did the uh the uh, we went back to the uh state DOT, D O D E C. And uh it asked the question. And they said it's just an automatic that came up. And I don't know why.
It does that.
Yeah, it does, and it it does it on uh some environmental things too, some some uh. Uh we've had it happen on environmental things. Where they say there's a, there's a uh environmental site.
Yeah.
Media site, and then there really isn't, you know? So it's. But we put it in as it was, and if you have any information, we'd we'd be glad to.
Al, there there is a um, I think it's easy enough to go in as a guest into the uh. Estate Chris system, C R. Cultural Resource Information System. Just type in the address and um. See if there are. Uh there's either anything identified for the particular site or if there are studies on adjacent sites. Um and some of that information comes up fairly quickly.
Okay, that is how you do it.
Very quickly.
Gives you gives you an eye shot.
Yeah, so if there's, if anybody else did a uh an archaeological or cultural resource study. In any of the adjacent properties or, you know, it could be within a. Distance of your site, you'll you'll see everything there.
Okay.
Al, um did you go to the conservation board?
Yes.
They didn't have any concerns, is that right?
That's correct.
Um are there trees going to be removed as part of this project?
I I'm sorry, what?
Are there trees going to be removed as part of this project? And if there are, how many? And kind of give us a description of what's being.
We don't know how many, but all of the ones from from the front of the street back to the uh silt fence. Will need to be, we need to come down because of, just don't have room for leaving any of them there. I don't, I don't have a number.
Do you know what type of trees they are? Secondary growth or do you know?
Well, they're all secondary growth. Um yes, they are.
All right. There's David, Karen, Pam. Other questions? Jason?
I'm good.
Karen, you all set?
Bill, uh just one question for Al, just to follow up on on Ramsey's um. Idea of merging the driveways. Uh Al, do you know if there is an existing? Boundary line agreement or driveway agreement on record in the county clerk's office for that encroaching driveway?
We have not found one. We found a survey map that showed it. Uh not as much as as we have it. Uh but we found it on a survey map, um but nothing uh, nothing filed in the county clerk's office that we can find. Okay, thank you.
All right. At this point, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that cares to address this application? Ramsey or Jeff, you seeing anybody?
I'm looking.
I'm not seeing anyone. Let me just check myself. I'm not seeing anyone either.
All right. Uh Al, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh that brings us to. The final uh public hearing of the night, which is five P N B two. Uh Tom Fantuso, uh owner for preliminary site plan approval to construct. Six hundred square foot uh building addition. Make some minor site improvements to property located at uh twenty-two zero four one South Clinton Avenue. Is uh is there anybody here to represent the applicant?
Yes, uh I'm here. This is Tom. Hello, everyone.
Good evening, Tom.
So yes, uh just what you said is what we're proposing is the uh six hundred foot addition on the back of the building. They, the front part of the building is relatively small. It's um. It it's only about five hundred square feet. We want to put an addition on there for some storage, some extra elbow room and a couple of patient rooms. Because we see people in wheelchairs and. Can you hear me?
Yes, I apologize.
All right, I I lost you guys, that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're not asking for any more additional parking. We're actually uh going after a a variance for reduction in parking. Um we're part, we're building, we would like to build the addition over. If you, there were some pictures I sent earlier in the week that uh we are building it over part. Half of it is already blacktop, so we're gonna be taking up some of the blacktop between the two buildings. With very little, little bit of the grass is gonna be taken up. To put the addition on. You won't see it from the front. Um side, it'll look just like the rest of the building from the sides. And from the one side, it's all trees on the side of the gables.
Architectural uh plans for this, Jeff?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they should be there.
Okay. All right, so from the front, it remains looking pretty much the same.
You won't see it, and we're only doing the lower half. If you notice, we're not going above the one floor.
Right. Okay, so you do need a a variance because you're not providing the parking to meet the code.
Yeah, they they want sixteen parking spaces for the square footage of the home. Um there's just no possible way we would ever use that, and it's not necessary. We only book two patients per hour. So there's only two practitioners, two part-timers. There's only four of us in the building at any given time. And then if you're booking two patients per hour. With one per practitioner. You know, maybe one or two walk-ins, you're really still well below the uh. The needed for sixteen parking spaces. It's really just not not necessary at all. I've got, you know, for the last three years, I've booked only two patients.
You also, they need a side setback variance from from the plans that they submitted.
I'm sorry, what was that?
There's also the need of a side setback variance. You show ten feet when I think twenty feet is required?
We have, well, this is the existing building. So we're just staying in line with the existing building. We're not changing anything. We have twenty, twenty-some feet on the one side.
And you and you have to have twenty feet on the other side, and it says that you have ten point four.
Ramsey, you have to stay closer to your mic. It's you're you fading and.
The only he they their plans are only showing that they have a ten point four, and if you look at the site data. For the project, it states that it only has a ten-foot setback when twenty foot is required.
On both sides.
Yes.
Even though we're staying in line with the same building?
Um yes, that's correct.
What you're saying is I'd have to cut this in ten feet on this one side?
Or get a variance.
Or get a variance? A site setback variance?
Mm-hmm, yep, yep.
Well, that would be the thing to do. I I'd hate to go through all this and have to chop this building in half. It's already small enough.
Yeah.
I I, yeah, I we just, it's more of us dotting the i's and crossing the t's and making sure you got all the approvals that you need.
All right, so we have to get a site setback variance for the the side on the on the right side of the building if you're facing.
I think would be the north side.
Yeah, you're right.
And if you look at the data on the site plan, you'll see what I'm talking about.
Even though it's existing, they it can't be, it has to.
No, if you if you had it at thirteen or something, but it's ten, so it's not, it's it's.
Well, would it?
Further non-conformance, which is not permitted by code.
If I was to cut it in two or three feet, that's one thing. To cut it in ten feet would be a lot. I mean, I could go in a couple, two or three feet. So if I brought this into thirteen feet at the end. Or twelve feet?
If you'd like, we could talk um after this meeting.
Okay.
And look at your alternatives with the zoning planner.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, try to, I would try to minimize as much as I could have taken out of it, but.
Mm-hmm, I understand.
But if but if it's if the if it's a matter of two feet or two or three feet, I'll, I could easily go with that. I need this, I need this wiggle room in here in the center part of the building. It really um, I need the elbow room. You know, it's just, it's a small, it's a small section.
We uh. Uh Tom, we we certainly can't can't speak, you know, for the for the zoning board of appeals. But it it does seem that it would bear some fruit for you just to uh, you know, talk with uh Ramsey and and Rick and. See if, see what the best uh, what the best options are for you.
Yeah, that's, I I think talking with Rick would be helpful.
Tom, have you filed your uh Z B A application for the parking variance yet?
Yes, yes, we we've sent all of applications in for everything.
No, I was just looking at cutoff dates for meetings and.
Yeah, I know, and that's why when you threw the, when you said about that uh variance for the setback, I was like, oh, man. Hey, you know, I'm gonna miss out on other stuff and trying to keep everything going.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen the application yet, but I assume that side setback variance is not part of the application.
No, I checked. I did look at.
Yeah, I.
I mean, the cutoff date for the June meeting is gone.
Yeah, it is.
But they're looking at, you're looking at July. June fifteenth is the cutoff date for the July meeting.
Well, like I said, I'm more than happy to talk about if there's a way of it setting that back just a couple of feet. I'm more than happy to do it.
Yep, okay, we'll talk.
All right, thank you. Other board members have questions for the applicant?
Nope.
All right, um this is a public hearing. Uh is there anyone that cares to address this application?
See anybody?
I don't see anyone either.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. That was our.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
And uh Ramsey and Rick can can help out with that and get you going.
Yeah, should I just hang out and then talk to you guys afterwards?
No, if you could give a call in the morning.
Call you in the morning?
Yeah, Rick is not here.
Oh, oh, to talk to Rick, okay. All right, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks again.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Yep, thank you.
All right. All right, that was our last public hearing. I think we want to circle back and uh discuss the applications. Uh is everybody good to keep moving here?
I'm good.
All right.
No, you good?
Yeah, fine.
All right. Let's go back. Let's go back to Country Club of Rochester, application four P O one, uh, dash twenty-one. This was for the clay tennis courts. Uh, their application is for a site plan modification. Ramsey, how does it, how does it become a site plan modification? Cause the, cause the original tennis courts that turned into a uh, ice skating rink were approved?
And that the new parking was being put in, Bill? So it's modification of the site plans that have been proved in the past?
Okay, okay. And, alright, okay, so it's a modify, site plan modification. Um, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move with close the public hearing.
That's Babcock Steiner?
Correct.
I'll second.
That's Delaney, seconds?
Delaney, seconds? Any, any discussion? Uh, motion? And second to close the public hearing. Ramsey, would you call the roll?
Osowski.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
The hearing is closed.
Alright, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the site plan modification?
I move that the planning board finds the proposed action will not have a significant impact on the environment and that the planning board adopts a negative declaration prepared by town staff. And that the planning board approves application four P O one twenty-one. Based on the testimony given, plan submitted and with the sixteen conditions outlined in the planning.
I'll second that.
Fader, seconds?
Moved and seconded. Uh, is there any discussion on the conditions?
Um, this is Ken. Uh, Ramsey, I'm sorry, I didn't get the conditions, so I wrote the report this week. Um, so I'm flying a little blind here, so, um, I'm just gonna ask a couple of questions here. Um, is, are, did we build into the conditions, um, the representation that illumination will only be on the single westernmost clay court? That that illumination will be dark sky compliant? You'll recall that the plans themselves actually show illumination on all of the courts. And is silent as to whether they're dark sky compliant.
Is the condition ten says, as shown on the submitted site plan? The submitted site plan only shows the one court. Um, only one court shall be lit. The submitted lighting expedition, exhibit, which I called out during the public hearing, shall be revised to address this condition.
Okay, uh, one other note, Ramsey. Items number eight and number twelve are the same condition.
Oh, yep, so, uh, we're down to fifteen conditions, striking condition twelve, cause it's repeated.
Okay, we had a, uh, couple amendments, the, uh, who moved? Jason?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, yeah, who sec? Am you seconded? You okay with the modifications?
Yes.
Alright. Okay, if there's no further discussion, Ramsey, please call the roll.
Osowski.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Fader. David Fader. I think he said I.
I think he did. He muted, but
Shake your head up and down if it's an I. It's an I, sorry. Well, Price.
Hi.
And Altman.
Hi.
Approved with conditions.
Alright, thank you. Alright, that, um, brings us to what does it bring us to? Sorry, keep going through engineers reports here. Okay, application five P O one dash twenty-one. Application of Benderson Development and, uh, Jennifer Blaine Firehouse Subs for conditional use permit in the old, um, Tim Hortons at twenty-eight thirty West Henry at a road. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, Ramsey, please call the roll.
Altman.
Hi.
Pay, uh, Price.
Hi.
Fader.
Says yes.
It's an I.
It's I.
Delaney.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
Hearing is closed.
Alright, thank you. Is there a motion? Uh, this is a conditional use permit. We have a motion.
I'll, I'll move that the planning board finds that the proposed action will not have a significant impact on the environment. The planning board adopts a negative declaration prepared by town staff. And I'll move that the planning board adopts application five P O one twenty-one, um, based on testimony given, plan submitted and the ten conditions outlined in the planning board report.
I'll second. Could I just ask that, uh, the one word be changed from adopt to approve?
Thanks.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, moved and seconded with one word modification. Ramsey, will you please call the roll?
Osowski.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi, please tell me you heard me.
I heard you, David. Loud and clear, thank you. Uh, member Price.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Approved with conditions.
Okay, that brings us to application five P dash two dash twenty-one, McQuaid Jesuit High School. Uh, modification of a conditional use permit. Uh, that dates back to ninety-three, with looks like some modifications in twenty-ten. Uh, so this is to replace the athletic field lighting. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
Karen and David? Any discussion? Ramsey, please call the roll to close the public hearing.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Sauski.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Hearing is closed.
Thank you. Alright, so the, um, application again is for a can, a modification with conditional use permit. Is there a motion?
I have a one up, well, I have one question when the motion is made.
Alright.
I'll move that the planning board finds that the proposed action will not have a significant impact on the environment. And that the planning board adopts a negative declaration prepared by the town staff. And that the planning board approves application by P two twenty-one. Based on the testimony given, plan submitted and the fourteen conditions in the planning board report.
I'll second.
Delaney, seconds?
Moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Ramsey, you had a question?
Yes, uh, condition number fourteen, um, is that they can come back and renew the conditional use permit in a year. If you want to check to see how it's working, or if you want the lights adjusted. We did that the first time. We didn't have any problems with the first one. But it is what we did back in ninety-three, so I just put it in the report to see if you had any interest in doing that and having come, come back and seeing how it's working.
I, I don't I mean, do you, what, what is the, what is the town's approval authority or inspection authority on this when it is actually installed?
The only thing we could actually have them do is readjust the lights if there's spillage. I think this is an improvement over the last
Oh, sure, this is
set of lights.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I, so I'm not sensing that there's going to be a problem, to be honest with you. I just the last time, and I was here back then, um, the board really wasn't comfortable with it. Um, but those, that's a, the, the, this is a totally different application. And use of the lights.
You know, this is Ja, this is John. Based, based upon the photographs we saw of all those other school district athletic fields with the lights. I think this would be a waste of everyone's time, make them come back and, uh, you know, get reapproval, to be honest with you.
I, I guess I, I concur with that, that, uh, reduction in the number of poles, the efficiency of the fixtures, reduction in total luminaires, uh, that if you did have authority at the time of, uh, you know, find it like a final inspection, I don't, I don't, this gets a you know, what, what kind of inspection goes along with this? It's not a C of O, but, um,
No, it's, uh, we went no, uh, you know, if the lights are set right or not, Bill, to be honest with you. So, you know, I, 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 I do agree with John. I just didn't want not to bring it to your attention if someone felt uncomfortable. That is why I brought it to the, everyone's attention.
Yeah. Thank you, but in, in, in my mind, you could strike condition fourteen.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Babcock Steiner is fine to the amendment?
Yep.
And, uh, Delaney.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I think this will be an improvement.
I agree.
Okay, Ramsey, uh, we have a motion and a second to approve with a amendment to the conditions. Would you please call the roll?
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
Alright, thank you.
With conditions.
Okay, that brings us to application, uh, five P zero three twenty-one. St. Thomas Moore of Rochester and Mary Carriola Center for a conditional use permit. This is again, is at, uh, twenty-six seventeen East Avenue. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded.
The motion, Altman, seconds?
Yes. Uh, please, uh, move and seconded Ramsey. Uh, please call the roll relative to
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Altman.
I think she said I.
Shake your head up and down? Hearing is closed.
Okay. Alright, so this again is a conditional use permit. Does anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move that the planning board finds that the proposed action will not have a significant impact on the environment. The planning board adopts a negative declaration prepared by town staff. And I move that, uh, the planning board approves application five P O three twenty-one based on testimony given, plan submitted and the ten conditions outlined in the planning board report.
I'll second.
Price, seconds?
Yep. Um, any, does anybody that's moved and seconded? Is there any discussion on the application, anything we heard or the conditions? Okay, um, moved and seconded, uh, Ramsey, please call the roll.
Member Fader.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Sauski.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
And Delaney.
Hi.
Approved with conditions.
Thank you all. Alright, um, brings us to the application, uh, five P N B one dash twenty-one. This is the application of Claire Streb. Uh, for new eleven hundred fifty-three square foot single family house with an attached four hundred and nineteen square foot garage at fourteen oh two Blossom Road.
I move the board tables, application five P N B one twenty-one. Based on the testimony given and the plan submitted, the thirty-six items of additional information outlined in the planning board report are requested to make a determination of significance and to have a complete application.
I second.
Second by Babcock Steiner.
Moved and seconded. Any, I think it's pretty clear that the staff needs a little bit more information and clarity on
Yeah, yeah, we, unfortunately, she's gonna have to go down the property owners, gonna have to go down that road a little bit further just so we can see if it's meeting code.
Yeah, so, okay. Alright, alright, um, oh, Ramsey, that's, kinda you and Rick can help out with that and just give alright, thank you.
Yeah, we'll meet with Al and try to figure it out. We gotta do a little bit more work.
Alright. Alright, so there's a motion and a second to table the application. Please call the roll.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
Application is tabled.
Okay, last um, applica, well, application not counting signs is five P N B two dash twenty-one. Uh, Tom Fantuso, I hope I'm saying that right. Preliminary site plan approval for six hundred square foot building addition, uh, for their, for his property at, uh, two oh four one South Clinton Avenue.
I move the board tables, application five P N B two dash twenty-one. Based on the testimony given in the plan submitted, the twenty-five items of additional information outlined in the planning board report are requested to make a determination of significance and to have a complete application.
I'll second.
Babcock, second.
Yeah, Babcock Steiner. Yeah, Babcock Steiner. David, thank you. Ramsey, how far off is that side setback?
He's right on it. Seven and a half feet is the, oh, this one?
Just curious.
But I, I have to talk with Rick about is there prevailing setback, I have to review the code?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if it's as simple as I'm just, you know, taking off a couple of feet, I, I have to read the commercial section to see what it says.
That's the district that it's in?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm tending to think, you know, you may want to try it for that variance, but I mean, he's going anyhow.
It'd be nice if he could add that to his existing application if it.
Yeah, that's what.
It hasn't been distributed.
First, I want to just check with, you know, with Rick and say, hey, what are your thoughts?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
I mean, that's. Because if he, he needs the square footage, it's, it's, it's a very small little project, so.
It's not a lot of residents that this is affecting, it's.
No, it's a parking lot.
It's not even.
Yeah.
Not even two stories, so.
No, no.
Okay. All right, there's a motion to table, seconded, Ramsey, please call the roll.
Altman?
Hi.
Price?
Hi.
Fader?
Hi.
Delaney?
Hi.
Babcock Steiner?
Hi.
Osowski?
Hi.
Application is tabled.
All right.
And the signs?
All right, time for signs. Okay. Jeff, are you walking us through these?
Yeah, this is signs 1609, it's for Denny's Bakery, it's a building face sign, it's not going to be lit. Nothing, it's taking place of a bakery that was previously there. It was approved at the ARB meeting.
Who guys presented?
Yep.
You want to do these, wanted to write it, write it as.
If we could.
Okay.
We could do one by one.
Yeah, I, I move to approve as recommended by ARB.
I'll second that.
That's Fader, second it.
No. Can we do it, can we just do an all in favor?
Yep, we could.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Is that signed up already, or is that just a good?
It's a good rendering.
Good rendering.
Once in a while we get those.
Usually, yeah, it's usually real.
Yeah.
This is sign 1609, it was for Mathias Seos Orthodontics. It was tabled at the ARB meeting, because they, they're kind of looking for sign plan, because they're doing facade improvements to the whole plaza, so they're looking for kind of a sign plan to see how this will go along with those.
It was also a variance granted originally for the number of signs they have on that building. And they said all the signs had to be the same, same style.
Yes.
So it gets a little complicated, right now they're using pump, so it's a little bit more complicated than than they figured, so we're gonna have to work with them on that.
We just, we just know how to make this guy like miserable, don't we?
He has not, he is not, he really wants to be in town, that's for sure.
Man.
I was surprised to see him back after before.
Yeah, he, he, this is his market for sure. He's always been polite.
He was my orthodontist, not that long ago, when I like went back for my second run.
Okay.
All right, so, so it's, it's table, there's no, no.
We do need a, a vote. The table?
Vote to table, okay, make them, I'll mo, move to table as recommended by the ARB.
I'll second that.
Fader?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's take.
All right. Next sign is for B Salon, and they're just placing the sign over an existing sign, so they kind of like just putting something in front.
Kind of looks like they took a some kind of a labeler and just put it on the
Yeah.
Picture.
This was approved, is presented by the ARB.
Anybody outraged by this, or we, we okay? I'll, I'll move approval as recommended by the ARB.
I'll second.
Got Altman on the second.
Altman beating out Babcock Steiner. Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Anybody opposed?
I think that's it.
Good?
That's it.
Ramsey, is there any talk about?